No, I don't.
A few minutes. Rodney, what did we put aside for the number two fire station land?
We put aside a million dollars to cover some.
Yeah, left.
Okay, okay.
Not that I want to spend. But maybe I do.
Giving an update? Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, August 11th, 2025, meeting to order. We have Pastor Sean Young, my former neighbor from Second Liberty Baptist Church here to lead us in the invocation and prayer. Pastor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good to be here with you all on today. Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the privilege of life and life more abundantly. And we ask on today, tonight, Lord God, that you would just bless this meeting. We pray that things will be done decent and in order. We pray that you will continue to bless the leaders of this community. Lord God, give them the knowledge, wisdom, and understanding to carry forth the business of the community and continue to serve the people. We thank you and we love you, and we pray these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the prayer of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Young, and thank you for everything you do and your church does support in this community. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll?
Mr. Evelyn.
Here.
Mr. Mooreier.
Here.
Ms. Pearson.
Here.
Mr. Steers. And Ms. Stewart.
Here.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. First item this evening is a consent agenda. Are there any concerns, issues?
Mr. Chair, whenever you're ready for a motion, I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of H and that it be made part of the record.
Okay. And H is the appropriation request for professional lobbying and governmental relation services. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Any other discussion? Ms. Watkins, poll of members.
Mr. Mooreier.
Aye.
Ms. Pearson.
Aye.
Mr. Steers. Ms. Stewart.
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn.
Aye. Next citizens' comment period. Anyone signed up? A few people signed up this evening, so when I call your name, I'll ask you to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will be given three minutes to address the board. Our first speaker is Chase Scrogg.
I'm here on a particular case. Don't know if I should speak after that. It's the third case. The item number three on your presentations.
That's a presentation. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you can speak on that. They'll wait till then. Next, Zachary Beasley.
Howdy, everybody. Zachary Beasley, 1637 Arrowhead Road, Quentin, District Two. So I'm here to talk about the traffic, particularly heading to the 64 West ramp at Bottoms Bridge. As many people here in New Kent are aware, most residents of the county must commute outside of the county for employment. I've come here to speak about the new traffic light system installed at the 64 West ramp to Richmond, which has created an unbelievable backup for the morning, afternoon, and weekends. Because of all these extensive backups, people fall behind their schedules, become frustrated, and in some cases begin to demonstrate early signs of road rage such as honking, cutting line, and engaging in verbal and signal confrontation. These backups are not just impacting our schedules, but the safety of everyone on the road because when people begin to feel the pressure of these annoyances, they feel more justified in taking of unnecessary risks which put other motorists in danger, which could lead to additional delays and inconveniences creating a snowballing effect on the roadways. Just yesterday, the traffic backup had extended down New Kent Highway all the way to the new communities, all the way to the community center. This delay was not only impacting those going west on 64, but those heading east on 64 and US 60 as well. I urge the board to take immediate action to contact VDOT and use local resources to better manage this issue that will likely continue to plague our community into 2027. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you speak for a lot of citizens in New Kent this evening. We are in contact with VDOT, and we are working on some type of resolution. But unfortunately, you know, New Kent is developing so quickly around the interchanges, and some of the stuff just has to be done. And we know there's going to be issues, but we're going to try to work with VDOT the best we can and try to minimize as best we can. And we probably just need to have maybe our next meeting or some type of information meeting to get out to the citizens working with VDOT to see if we can help alleviate some of these issues. But thank you. We understand your concerns. Last is Heather May Nebraska.
Good evening, honorable members of the board. My name is Heather May Nebraska. As you know, I currently serve on the school board representing District Three. I'm here in response to some of the comments were made at the July 14th school board.
Can you just take your address?
I'm so sorry. 7284 Crest Terrace, New Kent, 23124.
Thank you.
Comment, here to comment on some of the comments that were made at the July 14th Board of Supervisors meeting regarding the school board's perceived lack of presence or advocacy regarding the rebuild of New Kent Elementary School. So let me begin by publicly affirming my full support and enthusiasm for this project. Rebuilding New Kent Elementary isn't just a priority for me as a school board member. It's a commitment to the future of our students and the strength of our community. I am deeply concerned about the consequences of delaying this project. Every delay not only increases the strain on our students, our staff, and the quality of education we are striving to provide, but it also comes with some significant financial implications. My understanding is at least five to eight percent additional costs every year that it's delayed. There's a lot of aging systems. They're at their end of life, and it will require substantial funding to continue to keep these systems up. My support for the rebuilding over renovating is grounded in several key factors. One is the 2023 December New Kent Elementary School Master Plan Study, which was provided by Mosley Architects. The in-depth information that was provided at our school board CIP work session in October of 2024 and in the joint board meeting that we held in November 18 of 2024, where we, as board members, both got to attend and go see the elementary school. At that meeting, both school board and Board of Supervisors members alongside our county administrator, Mr. Hathaway, Dr. Nichols, our superintendent, and other officials received a detailed presentation and toured New Kent Elementary to witness firsthand the critical factors that need to be addressed. That being said, I also wanted to address another concern that was raised at the July 14th meeting in regards to whether or not the Board of Supervisors should be working directly with us as a school board or directly with our superintendent, Dr. Nichols. In our New Kent County Public Schools Policy Manual file, CBA, titled Qualifications and Duties for the Superintendent, it clearly outlines that the superintendent is responsible for overseeing facilities management, including both long- and short-term range plans for facilities. It also specifies and tasks the superintendent with representing the school division before local or state agencies that oversee building requirements or provide financing for buildings.
You're speaking on behalf of the board.
Are you sure? Okay. So in short, Dr. Nichols was just carrying out his responsibilities that he was hired to fulfill. And to my understanding, it's been a long-established protocol for him to work directly with Mr. Hathaway as the county administrator to streamline that communication between our boards. And I believe that this approach ensures not only efficiency, but helps us to maintain consistency in how information is conveyed and decisions are coordinated. I fully recognize the challenge that you are all faced with and the costly decisions that you are required to make. I do not envy that in any way from my conversations with Ms. Pearson. I understand the need for a new courthouse. And I know that, or my understanding is that you're currently evaluating some possible options as to where these new facilities might be held. And I realize that when you don't feel like you have all the facts and information that will help you make the best decision possible can make what you have to do uncomfortable and maybe even feel impossible. You know, communication is a very tricky thing. What one side perceives is not exactly what the other side might believe is occurring. So if there's one more thing I can advocate for tonight, it's what can I do? What can we do as board members to better understand one another and recognize where we're each coming from before these disconnects are made public? I just want to make sure we are talking with one another and doing everything that we can to make New Kent the best place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nebraska.
Mr. Evelyn, can I just say? So Ms. Nebraska and I speak on a regular basis, so the comments from July 14th didn't apply to us. So on December, the document from December 2023 is like a 50-page document, and I only received that like two to three weeks ago. So I'm still digesting that. I think everybody perceives that I don't want a brand-new elementary school down the road. I'm just, I'm trying to be fiscally responsible and get my questions answered. So I will have a list of questions from that document. There is a lump sum amount for a renovation, but there is no detail. And it was told that I was provided the detail, and I was not. And I still haven't been. So, but I'm sure I'll get that, and I'll evaluate it then. But we are going to do something for the elementary school. I just want to get my questions answered before that happens. Please. Thank you.
So no one else has signed up, so I'll close the citizens' comment period. Next up is the residency administrators' report.
Good evening. My name is Mark Harlow. I'll be presenting the report for VDOT tonight for Philip Frazier. Most of you had the opportunity to go over the report previously, but I'll do a quick review of what we've been doing here at VDOT. This past month, we had received 130 work orders. We've completed 119. We had emergency callouts, after-hour callouts. We had eight of those. Most of that was storm damage. Our maintenance crews have been doing asphalt repairs, drainage work, to include pipes, cleaning pipes, ditching. We've done some tree pruning, some brush removal, storm debris cleanup as well, litter pickup, and some mowing. We're getting ready to begin our third cycle of primary mow, so you'll see us out picking up litter and mowing on the primary routes, and we will follow up with a round of our second round of secondary mow. Our crews have been working to try to finish up that 249 pipe project. I don't know if you all were familiar with that at the elementary school. We've got the pipes jacked under the road, head walls on the inlet side. We're finishing up the outlet side now, so that should be closing up in the next week or so, weather permitting. I would like to speak a little bit about the 205 light. We're aware that we're having some issues out there. I know that Mr. Frazier has been working with you guys, trying to come up with some resolution on what we can do to make improvements on that. Our traffic engineering department has changed some of the timing on the lights, trying to help with keeping the backup off of the interstate. That's not really helping a lot on 249. I think we're aware of that. I mean, so 106, I'm sorry. So they're still looking into that. The bad thing is, like Mr. Evelyn was talking about, it's progress. It's, the bridge has to be taken and cut in half so they can take half of it down to put a new half up before they can start construction on the second half. So the light's going to be there for probably about 18 months before they get that complete. So that's about all I have on our report. If you guys have anything for me, I will do my best to answer.
Mr. Mooreier.
Were you just talking about 205 or 211?
I'm sorry, 211. At 106?
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So my light is what Mr. Beasley was talking about at 205.
At 205? Okay, at 249.
And we need a work session together with the contractor, with VDOT, and the engineers. It has to be changed.
Okay.
I mean, it's nightmare. I've seen the timing has been set up that the people going northbound on 249 that are going to go on 64, that timing has increased. I sat there for a while the other day. I said, they're still coming through. I don't think they're coming through on red, you know? So that was a positive thing I saw. But I don't see that same effort being done for people that are coming southbound that are going west on 64. So I know there's a camera there. I know they're seeing what's happening. Somebody's seeing what happened, so something needs to be done. But I want to thank you guys for the tree work, the bushes in Five Lakes. Five Lakes also is getting repaved. I understand we had to go to Egypt Road to repave that, and then we'll come back to Five Lakes. Understood, school's starting. Also, you know, a number of ditching questions that I have asked Mr. Frazier about were solved somewhat immediately, so I appreciate that type of stuff. I understand the things that you have under control, have under your control. It seems like they get done pretty quick.
We try.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mooreier, I do believe that implication of the 106 to 211 light has even made it worse at 205.
Probably.
Because.
People don't use that.
Well, you're backing up there, so they're going down 106. They can't get on. It's just made it even worse.
Trying to find alternate route, yeah.
Don't tell people Pine Fork.
Ms. Pearson.
Yes, I just want to thank you for your work on Egypt Road. It's really looking good. The center lines will be put in before school starts, I hope.
We're hoping if the weather cooperates.
And I also want to acknowledge that Mr. Frazier and I met along with the engineers and Mr. Evelyn last Thursday for an hour. We are probably going to meet more often about the 211. He did say there would be an educational document sent out soon, hopefully, for frequently asked questions. I just, I hate to ask for patience, but I'm asking for patience. They have tweaked the lights a lot, I think, since the very first day. Still not great, but just, we'll just try to keep educating the public. Maybe Mr. Frazier can come and give a full-fledged presentation at the meeting.
And I did talk to Mr. Frazier about that, and he is planning on doing exactly that.
Okay, good.
Putting something together and.
That would be wonderful.
Be informational for everyone, so.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I know I keep harping on it. There's not a whole lot of education that you need. If you go up there Saturday, it was backed up all the way to 106. Once the interstate backs up, it's nowhere for people to go. I mean, setting them off, so. The staging area, it's just, it's not enough room there. When you block it down, then you get an accident on 64, New Kent becomes a parking lot. So unfortunately.
Well, I mean, like, times to avoid the area, just common sense things like that.
But hopefully they can, we can work together and figure out something to help our citizens. Mrs. Steers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I never get on 64. But last week, I was in a hurry to get to a meeting at the Welcome Center, and I got on 64 because it takes me 10 minutes. And I sat in traffic for 20 minutes. One of the things that I told Philip about is the ramp coming off, you know, 64 going west is almost wide enough to make that two lanes because everybody getting off that exit is not going to Love's.
Right.
Or to Pilot. A lot of people are going home.
Home, right.
So it's almost wide enough to put two lanes coming off there. I'm not an engineer, but I got, you know, one truck let me by.
Right.
But then the next truck wouldn't move over at all, so, you know. But that was just a thought. I'm not, like I said, I'm not an engineer, but.
Nor am I.
If it's going to be that way for two years, you might want to consider.
Mrs. Steers. That was, that was one of the quickest things they feel like they could get done. They're actually going to start trying to implement that.
I wasn't aware of that.
Well, we just met on Thursday, so that was a comment.
The engineers listened to me. I do not want a job with VDOT, believe me.
Because, you know, because that's, you know, a lot of the residents, most of those people going westbound are local residents, so try to help alleviate some of that thing. That's exactly, that's something quick they think they can get done. So they are working on that. Good idea.
Cool. All right, well, I won't take credit for that, but also I talked to Frazier last week about the Eastview Lane, the new business that's going in there, the old school side area, and he said that they were going to repave and widen that small road.
They have plans to do sort of like they did on Egypt Road. They're going to trench the side of it.
But he said he didn't have a date, so if you could just find out, give me a closer date of when you might do that. I would appreciate it. But other than that, keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Stewart.
I'm always thankful to live on the east end of the county, but I'm extra thankful today. Anybody travel through there on Saturday morning? It's very nice. First of all, thank you. I've had a lot of residents really happy with utilizing the pothole website input system. We've had a lot of good success, so thank you with that. And do you know if Holly Fork Road is on the primary or secondary mow schedule?
Holly Fork is secondary.
Secondary. And about when do you think that's going to be mowed?
Should be about the second week in September.
Second week of September, okay. And then there's a very large washout at 600 Holly Fork Road near there. The side of the road is just almost completely gone, and I think obviously from all the rain. And I think the citizens that have called me about it have put it into the system, but I don't know that there is a way, like a button for washout due to rain. So just want to bring that to your attention. And I know they have contacted VDOT individually as well. But that is it. Thank you.
I just, I sent an email, had Mr. Hathaway send an email to Mr. Frazier. Were y'all able to get out to 10101 Tunstall Road? Some tree debris blocking.
I'll have to check, Mr. Evelyn. I'm not, I can't.
You mind checking on that?
Yeah, I'll let you know.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we have five presentations this evening. My first one is the Henrico Air Mental Health and Development Services Update. The executive director, Lori Tidy.
Good evening. Thank you. We appreciate having a little bit of time, and I have some folks with me that I'm going to ask to come up and stand too, so you get to meet them. We've, Daniel Rigsby is the mental health director that works here. Keith Harmon is our clinical supervisor at the Providence Forge office. Tim Capoldo, over this way, is the developmental services director. And Lisa Diggs is your representative on our community services board, and she's the chairperson this year and does just a fabulous job. You have a flyer in front of you that has some information on the number of folks that we serve. 344 New Kent residents received services last fiscal year. We completed 19 emergency assessments for folks that are in a psychiatric crisis and are evaluated for hospitalization. We admitted 75 individuals through same-day access for service, meaning that when folks are ready for services, they can walk through our door, we'll do an assessment, and then connect them to the services that they need. In addition to our outpatient services, our therapy, our case management services in Providence Forge, we have recently hired a new nurse practitioner to prescribe medication. We've had a vacancy for a little while. The person started a couple of weeks ago and was in the office last Monday, and will be there eight hours a week. And folks can continue to come to our western, I mean, our eastern. Um, and folks can continue to come to our western, I mean, our eastern, um, location if they need additional services. In addition to doing, um, lots of committee work and, um, and, and partnerships, um, we do community events, just working together and, and sharing information and sharing resources, uh, and being able to, um, to provide, uh, whatever services the individuals need here. We have, um, a, a couple things I just wanna mention. One is, we had a new program, uh, this last year for, um, pregnant and parenting women. This is a collaboration with New Kent, Charles City, and Henrico, that we were able to leverage opioid abatement, um, funds through the, um, Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority, uh, and have seen great results from that. That program will continue this year. Uh, we are in the process of, um, of building out. We had really had to design it, a mobile unit, um, that we will utilize both in, in all three counties, is what we are designing it to do. Uh, but we'll be able to go to different places, uh, where folks have, um, limited access, maybe to transportation, to be able to get in services. We had, um, tried to do this last year with one of the churches here, um, but it fell through. We do it in partnership with the Richmond-Henrico Health District, right now, in Henrico County, um, but we will be able to add a, a site here in New Kent next year. We will be, um, also requesting, uh, opioid abatement, um, money for the position to, to, to go into the mobile unit and working with Mr. Hathaway on that. I, um, I just wanna see if anybody has anything they want to say? No? They never wanna say anything, right? Um, we are here, um, and available to help wherever, um, wherever you need us, so, um, just really appreciate the, the partnership. We, um, did learn Friday that our office in Providence Forge, um, is, um, supposedly gonna close on, on Wednesday, um, so we will have a new landlord there, um, but look forward to being able to stay and providing services there. Glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for all you do for New Kent and its surrounding areas. Next, uh, discussion of drinking water, CIPs. Mr. Lang?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Uh, thank you for your time this evening. Tonight, we are asking for your consideration on three water infrastructure projects that are critical to meeting the county's goals presented in the comprehensive plan, and critical to maintaining water reliability for our customers and residents. Um, just a quick flashback, in January, Richmond and the surrounding counties, um, endured a five-day water outage due to a generator failure. In May, Richmond and Henrico, Eastern Henrico, endured a three-day water outage due to, uh, failure to properly backwash the filters at the treatment plant. And in June, Hanover endured a weekend-long water outage at the Dozwell Exit, um, which put Kings Dominion and the surrounding counties out of business for the weekend. The cause was reported to be a faulty prior repair. Bolts on the repair band were not corrosion resistant. So, each of these incidents was avoidable, um, represents a failure at several levels of utility operation and maintenance, and, and sort of indicative of a culture of indifference to, uh, worst-case scenarios. So, in several of these cases, the decision-makers, people like you and I, were able to say, "Hey, I'm new. Don't blame me," right? So, um, I don't have that advantage. So, um, we are already experiencing low water pressure in the Brickshire area during the peak demand times. I think Mr. Steers will attest. He gets the phone calls and emails, as do I. Uh, in the summer months, with three well pumps running, we cannot keep the storage tank full. So, um, we are one well pump failure away from having potentially our own water outage, uh, or water, um, mandatory water conservation. Uh, at Bottoms Bridge, the water use has exceeded the capacity of the backup well three times in the past five years. When I layer on the demand that the hearth at Patriots Landing would, um, create, that number would jump to seventeen times in the past five years. So, that's thirty percent of the time, the backup well would not be able to meet the system demand. Um, the backup well is an old Five Lakes well. The new well does a thousand gallons a minute, it's no problem, but if something happens to the new well, we're gonna be in a, in a bit of a pinch. So, um, I'm here to request your consideration on the Route two forty-nine water line and the Brickshire Storage Tank. These are immediate needs that dress, address immediate problems or, or potential problems within the county. So, um, if we don't take action on these items soon, uh, we're probably looking at, uh, mandatory non-essential use restrictions next summer related to irrigation use. Um, that's gonna be a challenge to manage. Uh, we're not a enforcement agency, we're a service providing agency. Um, the existing capacities, and, and we're not talking about source capacities, we're talking about our infrastructure capacities, uh, do not provide for the economic and population growth that New Kent is experiencing at this time and that is outlined in the comprehensive plan. So, I think you guys see a little theme this evening. Um, the infrastructure improvements, the water system interconnections, along with the Pamukka River withdrawal project, will provide that capacity. Uh, DEQ will be reducing our groundwater permits in 2038 to levels that do not meet today's needs. So, we can't go backwards, right, in our water use. We can only look forward and try and meet the future demand. So, the CIPs we have presented for FY twenty-six to FY thirty lay the groundwork for a resilient and reliable water system, uh, ultimately surface water backed up with, uh, groundwater, and we even have reclaimed water for non-potable use. So, this is a very di- this would be a very diverse, uh, water supply system. Uh, and that is anticipated to serve the county's needs for the next thirty to fifty years. Uh, so, again, this is not a supply volume issue, this is an infrastructure issue. We just don't have the tanks and pipes to get the water where we need it, when we need it. Um, the cost of our long-term goal of developing the Pamukka River supply is probably about a hundred and fifty million dollars. As Ms. Dombrowski indicated, and I can back that up, construction costs are growing five to seven percent every year. So, time is of the essence. Um, I'd be happy, before I turn it over to Ted and, and Ben at Davenport for some discussion on potential funding, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions at this point?
I, I have a quick question. Mr. Lang, when, when were these slated to be in the CIP?
They were slated for this year, to be under construction basically now.
So, they are approved in this, the current CIP?
No, they were bumped back at the last minute.
That's what I'm asking, I guess. So, they're in fiscal year twenty-seven?
Hmm, theoretically, yeah. We haven't produced a, a, a new CIP since the...
Okay, and I assume Mr. Cole is going to tell us what those implications are as far as the pro forma?
He is.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Steers?
Uh, Mr. Lang, it's my understanding they're proposing to build a new subdivision behind Brickshire?
Yes.
And, I'm concerned with, you know, the taxpayers always having to pay everything. There used to be these things called proffers?
Yes.
And, you know, if this guy can afford to build two hundred new homes, have you reached out to him for a proffer to help pay for a new well or a new tank in Brickshire?
We have.
And?
And, um, lukewarm reception? Wasn't a no, but, uh, he, he didn't stroke a check either. So, by my calculation, he's responsible for about a third of the cost of the tank. Um, so, that came out to about two-point-one million dollars.
And, and with, with proffers, uh, we can only accept proffers doing a rezoning, and that rezoning occurred back in the mid-nineties.
Yeah.
But, we are having conversations with that developer to see what we can do collectively to make his development work. Um, but it won't be a, a proffer there, yeah.
We also get the connection fees from those connections.
Right.
So, that's another revenue source that would go towards, theoretically, towards the project.
Okay, well, just turn the temperature up just a little. You said it was lukewarm.
Will do. Not a problem.
All right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
How long have you been working with that developer on that expansion project there?
Well, this is a new developer. He bought out the old developer.
Um, we're talking, still talking about the...
Brickshire.
Aylesford?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably been talking to him for three to five years at least, I'd think. Does that sound accurate? It is a slow drip of questions, like, one or two a week.
Well, knowing the previous developer, I can understand why. Because of all the developers we've worked with over the years in this county, he is not in the top ten.
No comment.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any additional questions?
We have Dan Port come up?
Correct.
There you go. Thank you. Good evening. Sending something around here for you all to look at, that we go through. Um, the first ten pages are what I intend to go through, but there are supporting cases for the, uh, scenarios that we're gonna talk through, um, and I'd be happy to answer questions as we go. Um, if you go, there are page numbers in the bottom right corner, uh, page two, and picking up on what, what Mike just described, and also picking up on what we presented to you all at your retreat, and maybe a few times since then, we've been working closely with staff, looking at a number of different scenarios. Just a really quick reminder on how we're modeling the, uh, the finances of the utility system. We have audited financials through twenty-four. Um, we are using FY twenty-five and twenty-six budgeted figures. Um, system growth in the future is tied to development that is known and being projected by your staff, so they know with a, a reasonably high level of comfort what kind of development is coming over the next several years, and that's what is driving the growth of the system in terms of new users, flow, and, and revenues. Um, we're working with the, uh, adopted CIP and also, um, what we've been calling carry-forwards, which are detailed on page seven, and we'll cover that in a moment. Carry-forwards being projects that have been approved in prior years but not yet funded. Um, second bullet, uh, we've looked at two scenarios. First scenario being funding the capital carry-forwards, um, CI project, CIP projects in FY twenty-six, and the ten-point-two-five million estimated Brickshire tank project. The second scenario is scenario one plus a five-and-a-half million dollar project, New Kent Highway project. So, two scenarios that we're looking at, and within each of those scenarios, we're looking at two cases. Case A, only borrowing for the Brickshire, Brick, Brickshire tank and New Kent Highway project. Those are the only projects that we would borrow for. Anything else is being funded with cash, to the extent it's available. So, that one is borrowing less compared to case B, where we are borrowing an amount necessary for the projects and still maintaining that unrestricted cash policy target of at least fifty percent of the system. And in that scenario, case B, we're gonna be borrowing more. You're gonna see these numbers in a moment. Um, and when we get to the discussion about what is needed in rates and charges, we've looked at it, where we've calculated it as needed by fiscal year versus a more smoothed approach of level, more or less leveledized annual rate adjustments. So, if you go to page three, we have our four scenarios, or two scenarios with cases A and B across the top. So, remember, scenario one A, column B, the only thing we're borrowing for there is the Brickshire tank. Scenario one B, we're borrowing for the Brickshire tank, but we are also making sure that we're meeting our cash, minimum cash policy. All right, and I'll, I'll come to, to, to two in a moment. As you go down one A and one B, you're going to see, what are we funding with the green checkboxes? We're funding the carry-forwards, which we'll talk about in a moment, the FY twenty-six CIP, and the Brickshire tank. Keep going down, lines six, seven, eight, nine, the results, available cash balance remains positive. That's not the case in one A. That's where we're borrowing less, and to fund those projects, we run out of reserves. We don't have enough current reserves to fund the other projects. In case one B, you're gonna see we're borrowing more and our cash is maintained. It doesn't go negative, and in fact, we're able to demonstrate compliance with the policy. And in both cases, line nine, we're meeting our debt service coverage requirement of one-point-one-five times. So, keep going down, what are we funding? Line eleven, the carry-forwards, approximately twenty-four-point-five million. CIP for FY twenty-six at two million. The Brickshire tank at ten million point, ten-point-two-five million, for a total of about thirty-six-point-eight million. How are we funding that? System cash, one A is five-point-four million, one B is three-point-eight million. In one A, however, we need another seven-point-two million of cash that is not currently in the system, because remember, that is a lower borrowing amount. In blue is the borrowing amount. One A is ten-point-two-five million, just the Brickshire tank. One B is a larger borrowing for nineteen million because, um, we, we're not, we're maintaining our, our cash balance at the fifty percent. So, there is an additional funding needed for one B because the borrowing is greater. In addition to the cash and borrowing on line twenty, we have some leftover, um, unspent bond proceeds from a prior borrowing that we will utilize, interconnectivity cash that has been set aside over the years of two million, and a contribution from Henrico County of two-point-nine million. So, line fifteen and line twenty-three match. The projects, uh, that have been identified are funded with the caveat being line eighteen for case one A, the lower borrowing amount, we would need about another seven-point-two million dollars of cash brought into the system. Same setup on columns D and E, the difference is we're pulling line five, New Kent Highway project into the mix. Very similar results. We're funding everything, but if we limit the debt issuance on line nineteen to the fifteen-point-seven million, that's Brickshire plus New Kent Highway, we need about another eight-point-one million of cash pulled into this, to the system. Okay? Any questions on that? All right, so you go to page four. Um, this is the, um, as-needed charges that would be necessary to, uh, to make everything work. And you'll notice in the green, right, line one, um, case A, we're only borrowing the ten-point-two-five that I just discussed. Case B, we're borrowing the larger amount, nineteen million. And you'll notice that, as you go down that parity coverage, every one of those, we're meeting that one-point-one-five times coverage or greater. That part of it is, is being addressed. When you're going to the, either the available unrestricted cash or the available as a percent or as, is in dollars, case one A, we go negative. Don't have enough cash to do that without, uh, uh, the, uh, the cash infusion that I talked about a moment ago. Um, on the right-hand side, again, we're pulling in New Kent Highway into the mix. Same basic takeaway, coverage is met, cash is not met at the lower borrowing amount. Page five, it's the same basic setup, but it is rates adjusted on more of a smooth basis where they're avail- they're, they're set at a, a more or less level amount per year for rate adjustments. I think the key page here for you all is page six, and this is what we're showing for each of these cases, is the revenue needed in addition to the... is the revenue needed in addition to the natural growth in the system. Remember, the natural growth in the system is driven by the projections from staff for development that they have a high confidence level is, you know, likely to come, right? New connections by development or what have you. That's already baked in. What we're showing you in these percentages is the additional revenue growth needed to make all of this cash flow. And importantly, when you're looking at the Brickshire only scenarios in the green, if you're only, if we were to only borrow for the Brickshire project at 10.25, we need to find another 7.2 million. If you were to do that, you can go down the line and see what the rate increases would be needed or additional revenue growth that would be needed, either on an as-needed or smooth basis. In all cases, we're showing that we have the 4% adjustment that was implemented as part of the FY 26 budget. And so 27 and beyond would be future budgetary decisions for you all, depending on, again, Brickshire tank in the, in the scenario one dark green, and on the right-hand side would be including both Brickshire and New Kent Highway. Same setup between case A and case B. I know there's a lot of numbers here. It's, it's a little bit of a process to work your way through each of these cases and scenarios. Are there questions on this before we get into the potential projects and the funding options?
Any questions? Okay.
Okay. Page seven details out the capital carryforwards, and if there are questions on this, I'll ask Mike to come back up. But again, what we're looking at, what we've included in our scenarios here over on the far right are the projects sewn in columns J and K together. That's the 24.5 million of carryforwards that is running through the model. And again, I would, I would describe those as projects that have been previously approved, but not yet funded. I think that's a fair.
Correct.
Okay. So we have a number of projects that I think staff would recommend you'd want to move forward, forward with. We do have the ability to pay for some of those with cash. Not all of them, obviously, and, and the borrowing is likely to be necessary if you want to move forward with all of those projects. We've run that on the lower amount, the higher amount. Generally speaking, what's available to you all, talking off of page eight, three basic approaches, and you've, you've done all of these in one way, shape, or another in the past. A direct bank loan, a public issuance of bonds, or participation in the Virginia Resources Authority. This would be as a revenue bond of the county. You have a number of those outstanding. In our conversations with staff and looking at the modeling, knowing where rates are, if there's a desire to move forward, our, our, our recommendation would be to consider the VRA program. We did put, with, with staff's support, we did put a non-binding application into VRA because there is a deadline they had. If you wanted to participate in their fall pool, there was a deadline to submit an application. Again, it's a non-binding application. That has gone in. But they're also aware that we're having this meeting and maybe a subsequent meeting at a work session to discuss. Will we want to participate? If so, how much, for what projects? But if you did want to move forward with projects that cash was not sufficient to fund and debt was needed, a recommendation would be to consider the VRA fall pool. And if not the fall pool, you would have another opportunity in the spring of '26. I'm going to skip over nine and speak off of page 10. I think this is the relevant schedule. So this evening discussing, obviously happy to answer questions. There was some discussion about a potential work session later in August, if there's additional discussion to be had. If you did want to participate or continue to keep the VRA option open, there would be a need at your September 8th meeting to hold a public hearing and consider a resolution to participate in VRA. That is required of them. They need to have those sorts of approvals in place by September 19th. So September 8th clearly works. But we have also talked with them about if you were to take those actions on September 8th, and there was any sort of concern about actually moving forward after that date or something else were to evolve, early October would be the absolute deadline if you decided that you wanted to withdraw from the program, right? So you could take the action on September 8th and continue to keep that option open. And if for some reason there were something to evolve where you decided you didn't want to participate, early October would be the deadline to make that known. So we're trying to keep this option open for as long as we can, as you all think about this and maybe have questions, follow-up scenarios, what have you. Any questions?
I.
Mr. Chair.
I assume if we do these, that we would do the smoothed approach. What was that before all this was taken into consideration? Was it 4% every year? Is that, isn't that what we had talked about during the budget process?
Well.
Or is this in addition to that?
No, this is, this, this is, go back to page six, I think that's the page. You know, looking under either column C or E, to your point, the smoothed scenario, which over time would save a bit on overall rate increases. You're essentially doing more a little bit earlier and not having to do quite as high adjustments later. In prior scenarios, you know, we've modeled up the entire surface water treatment plant project. That's not running through here. All that's running through here is the carryforwards, about 25 million. Not that it's a small amount, but 25 million of the carryforwards, about 2 million in new projects for FY 26, and Brickshire tank at 10 and 1/4 million, New Kent Highway at 5 and 1/2 million. So it's a, it is not funding your entire multi-year CIP. There is, you know, particularly with the water treatment plant, significant cost, whatever Mike had said earlier, 100-plus million, that we haven't even modeled.
This will be more than.
For that, if that plant were to be included in the CIP and in this model, absolutely, these rate increases would be greater. More in line with what we presented at your retreat.
Okay.
I think our conversation was trying to work towards maybe these things that are, you know, really, I guess, front and center in terms of the near-term needs between, as I said earlier, the carryforwards, the 2 million of 26 CIP items, and then those two, those two projects.
Well, I definitely think we need a work session to go over this a little bit more because just skimming through the back of it is going to put us out of compliance some in some of our policies.
Uh, that's, that's correct, particularly the cash. And, and, and the only way to remedy that would be to bring in from somewhere elsewhere, not in the Water and Sewer Fund, wherever it might be, 7 to 8 million of additional cash to infuse in the water and sewer system. That would allow you to borrow the lower amount and be in compliance with your policies. But absent having that cash to bring in, what we're showing is the larger borrowing, the trade-off being you would be able to be in compliance with your policies.
Mr. Chair.
Can we, when we do that, can we get the projection of what the total increase will be with everything? I mean, like, what have we?
Well, we certainly can.
I mean, we need to know that, I think. This is on top of what was already projected.
And when you say the total increase, are you including the?
The total rate increase, is that what we're looking at?
It's 150 million.
With everything that's.
Right, that was my question. Would you like us to include the, the water intake withdrawal project? Which is $100 million too, because right now, that's not in here.
Be part of it, correct?
I, I, I would anticipate worst-case scenario. Right now, what we're showing you really is, is worst-case scenario. If we move forward with the water intake project, that would be part of it. I do believe there are some other options. Some discussions that are taking place amongst the region that could provide some alternatives. But we have a little time before we need to act on that.
So are you saying this is worst-case scenario, or?
Well.
I mean, I want to know what the worst-case scenario is.
I do believe that this is worst-case scenario, minus the full water intake project. What this does include, though, is because we have some time constraints, it does include us constructing the intake facility, which is basically putting the straw in the river. But, you know, building out the whole intake system, mainly the water treatment, that's not included in here right now. And the reason that we have some urgency for putting the straw in the river, the intake, is there are some time limits on that permit that we currently have. Is that correct?
I mean, we could do that by projecting when, when we will need to do those things.
Yes, yes, we can.
That's what I would prefer to see.
Yes, we can. And, and, and I say this is worst-case scenario too. That 50% cash on hand, I think it's a great policy to have, but that is a self-imposed limitation. We can look at a third, reducing that to 30%, and I still think we'd be in good shape. So we can look at options too.
Yeah, and I would say just anecdotally, if you're looking at page six, column, you know, C or E, right, the smoothed rate increases, we're talking 5% to 6% per year, right? When we presented to you all back at your retreat, and we included the 100-plus million for the water treatment plant, those rate increases were 15% to 20% per year. So that's, that 100-plus million of a water treatment plant has, will have a significant increase on the level of revenue that the system needs to generate. Because again, it's not creating any new revenue on its own. It's, it's, it's the alternate source of water from what's a much more low-cost source of water. So it, it would have, and don't hold me to this because a few other things have changed, but a significant impact from 5% to 6% a year to something closer to 15% to 20% a year.
And I, I'd like to state for the public too, because I know it's a lot of information, it can be confusing, and I'm sure there's probably some question as to why would the county be looking at 100-plus million-dollar water treatment facility? The reason is, the state is requiring us to. The state wants New Kent to get off of a groundwater source. And in our current permit, our groundwater permit, year 13 of that permit, we will be cut by about a third of our consumption. And we're probably in year two of that permit. So we, we're being forced to, to look at this option.
I, looking at this, I, I think we have to get even other options. This is basically saying that in 10 years, my water bill's going to go from 200 a month, 200 a month, 200 every other month, to about 280. And then at the end, it's going to be somewhere around 350. If I'm a builder and I would know this stuff, I'd be thinking twice about bringing a, a development in that would need surface water, because it's, you know, it's unbelievable. I don't think we can make it up with what we charge on connection fees and that. I, I don't see, I, I, I see a, I see a major concern in developments like Patriots Landing, Five Lakes, and Brickshire and that, on what their water bills are going to be like, that we have to go outside of them, not to the taxpayer, okay? But we have to look at that regional, you know, whether we have to do something with James City County or with Charles City or something, we have to do something because we, we can't do this as it is. Am I right?
That, that's right. You, you are 100% correct. And, you know, there is discussion amongst the region about a regional water authority, and definitely we're a part of those discussions.
Can I just add a little bit of context here? The numbers you see here include all of the projects approved to date in our prior CIPs, as well as these two we're talking about. And included in this is the preliminary engineering of the river intake and the water treatment plant. So preliminary engineering of the whole project. From that report, we would get a more accurate, a more detailed cost estimate of the entire project. Right now, we don't know exactly what we're building, so it's hard to put a number on it. $150 million is the back-of-the-napkin estimate, so. Moving forward, yes, we're going to have to be very, I'd say detailed and, and sort of prescriptive in how we fund the actual construction of the project. There may be an outside provider, there may be a proffer, those, those sorts of things. But until we know what we're building, we, we don't have something in our hand to say, this is exactly what we need, so.
Once you put up, as Mr. Hathaway was like, putting that straw in the river, how long do you, and is it, it can't sit there for so long, will you lose the permit? And they won't let you draw if you don't build the treatment plan? Is there a timeline on?
Uh, it was a 15-year permit from DEQ, issued in 2018. So we have until about 2033. They would, um, yeah.
To put ice in the water.
They, uh, for the withdrawal, for the actual withdrawal. To get the, to get the, we're already going to have to go back for a permit amendment for the work in the river. That, that expiration date is too close. We're not going to be able to get in there and do it. So, but on the DEQ permit, yes, they'll have to renew it because this is the only option they've given us. They, they're cutting off our groundwater. Any additional questions? Turn it back over to Ted, or you're done?
Nothing else, sir.
You cooked long enough.
I really wish you hadn't have said that, okay?
What's that?
I really wish you hadn't have said that, because now a lot of citizens will be upset because they go, now you're going to hear the last thing you said. They're going to cut off our water.
They are going to reduce our permits.
Yeah, okay.
The water won't stop flowing, but violations could be thousands of dollars per day, so.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mike, I guess, Mr. Hathaway, you get with staff and maybe bring something to a work session, to the board. Next item is consideration exemption request of William Feltz for sections 98-1069 A10 and 98-1069 A12 of the New Kent County Code Resolution R-26-25. Mr. Silva.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And as mentioned, I am here this evening to provide an overview of the exception request that was just detailed, submitted by William Feltz on behalf of Upper Right Properties NKCLLC to waive the Commerce Corridor overlay district requirements requiring that, one, all parking areas be paved with concrete, asphalt, or similar material, and that traditional curb and gutter systems be used in such areas. And two, that a sidewalk of no less than five feet of clear and unimpeded area be provided across the frontage of the property in all areas designated as village by the county's comprehensive plan. So for some context, the exception request is related to a site plan that the applicant has submitted and is currently under review with the county reflecting proposed parking area and site entrance improvements at 901, 9101, rather, Boulevard Road located in Providence Forge. The property is located, again, in the bounds of the Commerce Corridor overlay district. So the site improvements themselves are planned in relation to the ongoing conversion of the currently disused Providence Forge Hotel seen here on the screen, which is currently being converted to an office use. And pursuant to the county code, the Commerce Corridor Overlay District Design Standards do require. do require that all properties within the bounds of the district, that their parking areas be paved, again, with concrete, asphalt, or similar material, and again, also carry with them that sidewalk requirement that I mentioned. Now, the applicant is requesting an exception from both of those requirements in order to allow that the proposed parking area instead be surfaced with gravel and to waive entirely the requirement to provide a sidewalk across the property's frontage. So, a quick note on the request to use the gravel parking lot surfacing. In their narrative statement, the applicant does state that the use of gravel surfacing for the parking area will help to facilitate the orderly discharge of stormwater from the site and that the use of concrete or asphalt and the traditional curb and gutter systems in this location would serve to concentrate runoff and potentially worsen flooding issues in the Providence Forge area. And on that note, county environmental staff has reviewed the proposed stormwater plan that was submitted with the site plan and agrees that there are indeed benefits to allowing the parking lot to remain gravel without the curb and gutter. On the request to waive the requirement to provide the sidewalk along the property's frontage, the applicant has stated in their narrative statement that the locational context of the site set back a street from Route 60 and being bounded to the west by the CSX tracks revolved in a configuration where future sidewalk connections would be unlikely and pedestrian traffic would potentially be unsafe in this area due to that challenging intersection of Boulevard Courthouse and the CSX tracks. And furthermore, from a sort of existing improvements constraint and sort of historical consideration, there is an existing bonded river stone wall that you can see in this image from the 1940s. And then there it is, again, seen today. And, you know, the existence of that wall in its current location would impede the ability to construct the required sidewalk on the subject property without removing or altering the wall, which again, has been there for the duration of the existence of the building on the site. So avoiding impacts to the wall would make the only logical placement of the sidewalk within V-dots right-of-way. So in staff's consideration of the request, staff did find that the requested exceptions would comply with the findings necessary to grant an exception to the design requirements of the Commerce Corridor Overlay District. And by reconciling the reasons for the exception, as stated by the narrative, reconciling those with the requirements, rather, the findings necessary in order to grant an exception, staff does feel comfortable recommending approval of this exception request. And likewise, at their July 21st meeting, the Planning Commission also voted unanimously to forward a favorable recommendation of approval of the exception request to the board. They did add a condition with that recommendation of approval that in the event the gravel parking is surfaced with asphalt or concrete somewhere down the line, that at that time gravel diaphragms would be required along the parking lot edges in order to ensure that stormwater sheet flow characteristics are maintained. So that concludes my presentation, but I am happy to answer any questions the board might have. I think we also do have a rep from Land Tech as well, in case there are any questions for the applicant.
Mr. Steers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Can you put that slide back up there, the one that shows farther back? We'll start there. To the right of that building.
Yes, sir.
Is a junkyard. And then there's a barber shop, or hairstyling shop, and then there's another junkyard. Now, if you go to the next slide on the other side, if you go down the street down this way, there's another junkyard.
Yes, sir.
Why would we require him to have a sidewalk?
That's a great question. It is one of those requirements that is not site-specific per se, and I think that's a great argument for why this ability to request exceptions exists.
Right.
Like you're saying, some of these requirements might not make sense in every situation.
Right. I think this is one of them.
Understood.
I've worked with the owner of the property for several years, trying to decide what to do with the building. At one time, he discussed maybe putting in an upscale steakhouse. That's not going to work because we don't have water and sewer in Providence Forge. Plus, I can imagine if you're in an upscale restaurant and that train comes by there when you're drinking, you're drinking. You know, you might spill a little bit on you. But anyway, and there's no reason to have a sidewalk, you just know where to go. And the gravel driveway, like you said, you know, is, I think it would help with the stormwater runoff there too. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? I tend to agree with, Mr. Steers, I know we've done this before on another project. It's probably been something 80 years ago. It was an existing business on Route 60. I understand why it's in the code, but at least this gives the board the exemption to make common sense decisions, so. Any other discussion?
If there is no other discussion, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Steers.
I move that we adopt Resolution R-26-25 approving an exception to section 98-1069 of the New Kent County Code to allow a waiver from additional requirements in the Commerce Corridor Overlay District at 9101 Boulevard Road, tax map 41A1-1-1, and GPN number E16-0026-4149. Please don't ask me to repeat that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steers. Any other discussion? Ms. Watkins, poll members, please.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye. Motion to pass. Next, New Kent County Streetscape Consultant Agreement Approval. Ms. Edman?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's very nice to be here this evening with you. And before you, this evening, you have a resolution that would authorize Mr. Hathaway to enter into an agreement with Michael Baker International to conduct streetscape planning and design services for two areas in New Kent. One being in the Eltham area from Farmer's Drive, basically just beyond Bob Alley, towing to the bridge. And the other one would be in Providence Forge from the Family Dollar on Courthouse Road down to Route 60 to Walgreens. And what we'll do is just look at the existing condition, working very closely with the public, the business owners, to understand what are the, you know, issues, concerns in these areas? What are the opportunities for safety, for access management? Where we know we have quite a few driveway cuts, curb cuts that could potentially be cleaned up in these areas, as well as some beautification, some landscape, as well as lighting. So we'll be looking at these different things and coming up with, again, what would be some good alternatives for both of these areas. Once we have some agreement with the public and the business owners, then we would go in, develop higher level of design and engineering, as well as getting some cost estimates that could be then used for future applications.
Any questions?
I'm happy to, yeah.
Mr. Chairman? These funds are already included in the budget?
Yes, ma'am. These would be our consultant services funds that are currently in the Department of Transportation Development budget.
Mr. Chairman, not so much a question, but just a statement. Thank you, Ms. Edman. This is something that we've talked about probably January of 2024.
Yes.
So thank you for seeing this through. And this is something, you know, for the public's knowledge that the folks in Eltham have discussed with me. Honestly, more than I thought they would. And then when I was door knocking during the campaign, I experienced the lack of sidewalks. So I could really relate to what they were saying. And again, I was just surprised at how much they did want sidewalks in Eltham. So I look forward to, you know, the public engagement and just making sure everyone is okay with how we move forward. So thank you again for bringing this forward.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Edman, thanks for all your work on this project. And in addition to what you've proposed here for the streetscape is, you know, that we've had an agreement with the New Kent Chamber of Commerce from 2024, I think it was. And then that president left. And then the ball was dropped. And then the new president came in, who was also a county employee. And then he was gone. The vice president decided he didn't want the job. So this has been going on down the road, so. But, you know, and there's this gentleman from the West Point Chamber of Commerce has stepped up to the plate, and he's also trying to get some funds to help maybe plant trees, bushes and stuff in the median and that kind of stuff. So I appreciate all your work on this.
Yes, sir. And I have been in touch with the New Kent Chamber staff, and they have submitted to me their application that they have developed. They haven't yet submitted that for funding. So they're in the perfect spot to work with us so that we can come up with the design of where those plantings would actually go and so that will support their funding application.
That New Kent Chamber or West Point?
That was the New Kent Chamber.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The, I guess, they get paid by, the way I read the contract, task order?
Yes, it would be, it's, oh, so this is an on-call contract that we'll be using. It's a cooperative procurement with Plan RVA. So it's Michael Baker International. So this isn't one of our consulting firms that we actually have, Timmins or RDA. So this will be using a cooperative procurement from Plan RVA. And we are on that procurement. We have provided that information as well.
Just hope this is not one of those studies that you do and then gets set up on the shelf. But I know, because you have to deal with a lot of, when it comes to property rights, people get really funny. They start and tell you, I was surprised that, Ms. Stewart said, I was surprised to hear that. That made me think twice about this. I do have a little concern about it. I'm not going, you know, I tell you. Have you read this contract, Mr. Hathaway? It's non-disclosure in there as well?
I will say that this will be predominantly within the existing right-of-way, the existing B-dot right-of-way. We're not looking, I mean, if there would be a land acquisition, this would highlight that. But our, and, you know, we're expecting just to work within the existing right-of-way.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's good enough, thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And I believe the estimated task order is around $140,000 for this, yeah.
It's just, I've never seen, most time contracts, they break out labor rates on different, you know, the engineer or someone else, you know. I just didn't see that.
That's not broken out, no, sir.
They do have their hours broken down.
I guess we didn't get it. Well, I didn't see it.
Okay. They, yeah, they do have their hours broken down by, basically by employee and hourly rate.
Oh, yeah, they do on the last page, that's right.
Okay. All right, any other questions? I entertain a motion.
Say, Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the county administrator to execute the proposed agreement with Michael Baker International dash New Paradigm Planning in a form approved by the county attorney for streetscape evaluation recommendations as described in the proposal at a cost not to exceed $139,460.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Any other discussion? Ms. Watkins, poll members.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye.
Our last item this evening is Resolution R-25-25, National Opioid Settlement with Purdue Pharma LP and Sackler Family.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We have received notice from the Attorney General's Office that there has been a national opioid settlement with Purdue Pharma and the Sandler family. And the Attorney General's Office is requesting that all localities that are interested in participating in the settlement adopt a resolution by September 30th. At this point, we don't know how much funding the county will receive. That is dependent upon the number of localities that participate. The state's share will be based on the participating localities. And then I'm sure, after we get the participating localities, the state will develop a formula to distribute its share of funds. So right now, we don't know how much funding we would receive. We do know that the settlement is a $6.5 billion settlement, but that will be distributed across the country, so.
But any questions for Mr. Hathaway?
Ready?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution R-25-25 approving the county's participation in the proposed direct settlement of opioid-related claims against Purdue Pharma LP and the Sackler family.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Any other discussion? Ms. Watkins, poll members.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye.
We have one public hearing this evening. Ordinance O-15-25, amendments to section 70-196 and 70-197 of the New Kent County Code. Mr. Hathaway again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Again, you have before you ordinance O-15-25. This is a proposed amendment to section 70196 and 70197 of the New Kent County Code. The purpose of this amendment is to authorize camera speed enforcement in highway work zones. Currently, our ordinance allows camera speed enforcement in school zones. And this would include work zones as well. Even without this amendment, the sheriff has the authority today to enforce speed with the use of cameras. This ordinance is being proposed to just be more clear to the public that this is a requirement. We feel that it would be confusing issuing highway workforce violation, work zone violations, when our code only speaks to school zones. The state code gives us the authority, though, to issue violations in work zones as well. So really, it's just being more clear, more transparent to the public while this enforcement begins. The sheriff's office, they do have a permit from the state to issue violations. It is the intent of the sheriff's to begin this month with the violation notices. They have been monitoring speeds with the use of cameras, I believe, beginning in July, and have been issuing warnings. But this month, the notices will be enforced.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. I'll open up the public hearing. No one signed up. I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Avalon, I have a question for Mr. Hathaway or Chief Deputy McLaughlin. How many warnings have been issued so far?
I do not have the exact number, but several thousand.
I have the number.
You have the exact number? You got one?
Yes, sir. Tickets will start being issued on August 12th. In a trial run in just 18 hours, 3,500 vehicles were caught speeding. One driver was caught going 106 miles per hour in a 60 mile an hour zone. So, yeah, 3,500 vehicles.
And that's from the day of that interview, correct?
In 18 hours.
Several other times we've been out there since then.
I was just curious of the total. I know that that is large, but I have a.
And that's only been for, you know, a small amount of time.
Yeah, 18 hours.
Yeah, and that's.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Ms. Pearson?
I move to adopt ordinance O-15-25 to amend sections 70-196 and 70-197 of the New Kent County Code to allow camera speed monitoring and enforcement in highway work zones and high-risk. high-risk intersection segments.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Any other discussion? Ms. Watkins, poll members.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye.
Next, elected officials' reports. I'll start with you, Ms. Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just quickly, we had a really fun convocation this morning with the schools, and I was grateful to be there and just wish everyone that's going back to school a great and successful August 18th. I'm glad I am not going back to school on that day, but just wish you guys a lot of luck and look forward to seeing the pictures on Facebook. And this morning, when we were sitting in convocation, I couldn't help but to think about an individual who, between our last meeting and this meeting, passed away, who worked for the schools, Mr. Tim Parsley, worked there for 26 years. And, you know, that's, he was only 63. That's nearly half of his life spent changing light bulbs, mopping floors, doing things that we don't think about and maybe don't give enough appreciation to. So I just would like to extend my appreciation to his family and my condolences to his family and just, you know, have an extra moment of thought and reflection about him. But with that, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. WAWA has submitted plans to the county for construction of a new gas station store at the intersection of Stage Road and Highway 33 with a projected opening next March, which I think the people in the eastern end of the county will certainly appreciate that. Last Friday, I was informed by the postmaster at the Providence Forge Post Office as planning to move their operations to the old thrift store located across the street, Caddy Corner. The facility will allow more room, additional parking for customers, and the actual move should take place in March of '26. And that's it.
Ms. Pearson?
Yeah, I just have one event that I'd like to announce. Diving off the dock is doing a silent auction and fashion show on Saturday, September 13th at 11:30 to benefit the Bridges of Change Domestic Shelter, starts at 11:30 at the Van Den Bouverne Hall in West Point.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have the privilege of representing New Kent for the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization, and this past month, there's been a change of memberships and change of people that are on the board. And one of those changes was retirement from the Richmond Regional Transportation Board and also the Central Virginia Transportation Authority of Mr. John Hodges. And unfortunately, he also passed away this past month. And they, he's had 30 years of service with Hanover County and Ashland, and there were a number of people that gave some, a little bit of discussions about how his service has meant so much to the region. And also, this past year, our own Lisa Guthrie, who's been a valuable member of our Richmond Regional Planning Association, Citizens, Citizens, come on, Citizens, Tactical Transportation Authority Committee for many, many years, and she has decided to move on from, to different situations. So we want to thank those two people for their service.
Staff reports? Mr. Hathaway?
I have none.
Other business, I know there's been some schedule conflicts the last month or so. Typically, we do not have an August work session, but I was going to throw it on the table to try to catch up on some business and see if we could come up with a date. I know, Mr. Moyer, has a lot of-
I got four dates. They're working. 10, 18, 19, 20, and 29. 29th, I'm one.
29th is the best date for me as well.
The Friday?
Yes.
I'm available.
Four. Good. Five, okay.
Yep.
In the morning, correct?
Yes.
Work session on a Friday.
Not only that, it's the Friday before Labor Day.
We're working. Hey, sorry. It's just one.
Nine o'clock?
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, do we have, in consideration of what we'll talk about, do we have the, any time for Parks and Rec to do the McKemme Woods update for Plan RVA?
That's part of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. You need a motion to-
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to adjust the 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting scheduled by adding a work session meeting at 9:00 a.m. on August 29, 2025, in the boardroom of the County Administration Building.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Ms. Watkins, poll members.
Ms. Pearson? Aye. Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye.
Appointments delegated by district? Appointments not delegated by district? Oh. I didn't hear anything. I gotta do something.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of focus for District. I move to appoint James Wallace.
I move to appoint James Wallace as appointee as District Force Representative to the Purchase of Development Rights Committee to serve a three-year term, beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2028. I also moved to appoint Debbie Ivy as District Four Representative to the Seniors Volunteer Hall of Fame Selection Committee to serve a two-year term, beginning January 13, 2025, and ending December 31, 2026. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Watkins, what do you call the role, I mean, on appointments delegated by district?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye.
Appointments not delegated by district?
That's you. Right? Two are you.
I move, yeah, yeah.
The last, yours is the last word, sorry.
I move to appoint Nicholas Rice as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one-year term, ending December 31, 2025. And I move to appoint Gage Utsi as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Committee Service Committee to serve a one-year term, ending December 31, 2025. Mr. Steers?
Go ahead. Go ahead. All right. Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Izzy Atkins as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one-year term, ending December 31, 2025. I move to appoint Amari, A-M-A-R-I, Robinson, as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one-year term, ending December 31, 2025. And I move to appoint Ari, A-R-I, Robinson, as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Committee Service Committee to serve a one-year term, ending December 31, 2025. Thank you.
Ms. Watkins, we poll the members of appointments not delegated by district.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye.
Next, we have appointments of regional boards and commissions.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to, I move to appoint Michaela Black as a New Kent representative to the Thrive Virginia Board to complete a four-year term, beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2028.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Ms. Watkins, poll the members of appointments of regional boards and commissions.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer, I think you have a closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into closed session pursuant to 2.2-3711A-1 of the Code of Virginia for discussion and evaluation of the county administrator's performance and salary.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye. Our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at 6:00 p.m. on Monday, September 8, 2025, and the next work session will be held at 9:00 a.m. on Friday, August 29, 2025, both in the boardroom of the County Administration Building. The board will also consider setting a August seminar. We'll be going to closed session, and we will not be conducting any business when we get out. So on behalf of the board, everybody enjoy your Labor Day weekend and what's left of summer.